So we don't need him for the start here. Oh, okay. Let the rec reflect. The meeting is reconvened with all members present. Council President Austria Bailey is absent, excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. May I have a motion for executive minutes of June 8th and June 22nd, 2015?
I'll move them.
Second. Discussion was already in executives. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
A motion for the regular minutes of June 8th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Oh, excuse me.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
And Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you. And a motion on the regular minutes of June 22nd, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay. And welcome, everyone, and again, apologize, we're running a little late in our executive session. And so I appreciate your patience. Just a few things, and then we have a special swearing-in about to happen. First, I want to thank Council President Austria Bailey for covering for me when I was on vacation. And she is now, I'm back fully charged, and now she's on vacation recharging her batteries. Councilwoman Carmela Vitale and I had the opportunity to go visit Ruth Russell, 65-year resident of Madison, who called me earlier last week to let me, give me the sad news that after 65 years, she is leaving Madison, moving to Cranford to be closer to her daughter. So we stopped by and said hello to her. Ruth was a police matron, longtime member of the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps, including serving as her historian. She and her late husband, Bresford, known as Bear Russell, met at the basketball game at the community house. They had celebrated their 50th anniversary in 2002, so you can do the math as to when that game might have occurred. They were married at the Grace Episcopal Church, so someone that really has Madison roots. And if you have never met Ruth Russell, you have missed one of the most delightful people you could ever meet. And in fact, I told her, she has to give me her home, her new home number, because if I have a rainy day, I'm going to be calling Ruth Russell to bring the sunshine in. She is that type of person. And someone else that, not a Madison resident, but certainly touched a lot of Madison residents' lives, Joe Roberts, who was the principal of Madison High School, also served many years as vice principal, died last week. You know, he kept his Madison connection, living in Florham Park all these years, going to Bottle Hill Day. I was always amazed when he'd be walking around Bottle Hill Day and being able to pick out former students, you know, years later and know exactly who they were. And consider him a great friend, even though my first encounter with him was related to his vice president, vice principal's role of disciplinarian, so he still are good friends. And an update on the affordable housing. As you know, that at the last meeting, we changed our direction and have pulled back on what was the original plan on Walnut Street and have filed declaratory judgment with the Morris County Superior Court. That was taken care of. If you visit our website, you can see the declaratory filing, which talks about the excellent work the borough has done with affordable housing since 1970, and looks to declare the borough in compliance with its constitutional housing obligations. So please go to Rosnet to visit that. Employee of the month for July, Robert Dunn of the Madison Fire Department, for the work he personally undertook organizing, scanning, researching the fire department's extensive photograph collection, ensuring preservation of the department's history, which has been posted periodically on Facebook, so it's great to see. And we have anniversaries. We have Acting Detective and Sergeant Paul Kozakowski, Acting Detective slash Sergeant Paul Kozakowski of Police Department, of 20 years on July 17th. And I'm beginning to read the second one over again. I think that is all my notes, and I'm going to come down to do a special swearing-in. Could I have Joseph Mittermeyer, please come forward? Chief? Family? I don't have a memorized yet. Okay, raise your right hand, left hand on the Bible, and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Joseph Mittermeyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Class II Special Officer.
Class II Special Officer.
In the Madison Police Department.
In the Madison Police Department.
According to best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
I swear the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome aboard. Pin the badge on there. Congratulations. on your first exam, or everything went on this meeting. Community affairs, Carmela, we'll get to you after, we'll let Robin, if you have a, we'll do that next.
Okay, all right. Then you want me to do more, okay.
Yep. Public safety.
Thank you very much, Mayor. All three of the Madison Fire Department's 1,250-gallon-per-minute fire pumps were tested and recertified, thereby meeting the annual requirement.
Oh, thanks.
Volunteer firefighters Anthony Sanchez and Andrew Palmer completed the 160-hour firefighter-one training class at the Morris County Public Training Academy. Volunteer firefighters Pat Debiass, Evan Webb, and Joe Gilmore completed the 96-hour firefighter-two training class at the same academy. Volunteer firefighters Bruce Goodwin, Jim Finelli, Troy Pahowick, Dominic DeRosa, and Colin Dunn completed the 16-hour NIMS 1,300 Incident Management Course. New hydrant flags have arrived, and on-duty staff have begun to install them. Some 600 flags will be installed on all borough hydrants by the fall. This past Saturday, July 11th, the fire department was finally able to pump Geraldine. Morristown brought down their Fox and the two pumps side by side. Fire Department would like to thank the Madison Commons Condo Association for allowing us to use the pond on their property to test the pumps on Geraldine. All went well, and the engine pumped approximately 640 gallons a minute with very little effort for 40 minutes. Not bad for being 94-years-old, I guess. That's it, Mayor, thank you very much.
And now with utilities and community affairs, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. This, these are notices from the Chamber. The Merc Vendor Fair on Wednesday, July 15th, from 11:00 to 1:30. Forty tables were reserved, 36 are, were Chamber members and businesses. Karen Meyer, who is the Executive Director, organized the Madison Basket to raffle off at the event. It was a great representation and participation for Madison. They are holding a Yankee game. The Chamber's annual Yankee game trip is scheduled for Sunday, July 19th. Tickets are $95 per person. The price includes the game ticket and all-you-can-eat seats and round-trip transportation from Madison to Yankee Stadium. There are tickets still available, so you need to get in touch with Karen at the Madison Area Chamber of Commerce for a seat. Also, Shakespeare at the Theater Networking Event. The Chamber has organized an evening at the Outdoor Shakespearean Theater on Tuesday, July 21st, on the campus of St. Elizabeth. You will see a performance of Love's Labor Lost. Tickets are $28 per person. There's no additional fees, and again, you have to get in touch with Karen. I should give you her telephone number, because her name is coming up all over this. And that's 973-377-7830. Merchant of the Month. July Merchant of the Month is the Madison Area YMCA. Nikki's Firehouse has been chosen for August. The Chamber's upcoming meeting is focused on foot traffic. Wednesday at Rock Goes Born Grill, and the July 15th meeting was canceled. And the next is the Madison-Chatham Networking Breakfast, which is held at Charlie Brown Steakhouse. There also will be a contractors' forum for the month of July and August, and that next, that next scheduled meeting will be September 17th at 7:00 a.m. at the Nautilus Diner. So those of you who want to get up early, 7:00, can meet them at the diner. From the Madison Senior Center, per the Borough's Council advice, revised van registration forms have been completed by 76 riders. The updated form now includes medical and emergency contact information, which has been entered on a spreadsheet for easier access and updating. Local resident Hank Knoblock has adopted the Knockout Rose bushes at the Civic Center, noticing that they had, they were in pretty sad state after a hard winter and aggressive weed infestation. The bushes are now weed-free, prune-fed, and blooming again. So it's just another great volunteer doing something for Madison. The first two summer seminars, co-sponsored by the Senior Center and the Madison Public Library, were held on Monday, July 6th. Dr. Douglas Simon drew an audience of 101 on the topic of America's global power. Eugene Liebler spoke on Islam and the Arab Empire to an audience of 102 on Thursday, July 9th. So that's, that's a good amount of people for this time of the year. We recently updated our listings on the statewide NJ211 website, which includes referral information on nutrition, transportation, medical insurance counseling, and other services. And there is a website, www nj211.org, and the seniors use that quite frequently. Now, from the Water Department. Ongoing as usual are water samples taken for the state mandated testing. And I'm not even going to try and pronounce some of these words, but take my word for it, they're testing everything. And lead and copper testing is always ongoing. They did have 70 requests for locating and marking underground utilities for homeowners, contractors, and other utilities. They did a lot of mark-out utilities on the intersection of Ridge Dale and Central Avenue and the entire length of Canterbury Road and Oxford Lane that was requested by PSENG. They frequently work on putting new meters on newly construction houses, also checking curb boxes and turning them off and on or replacing those. There was one broken water main that was investigated and resolved. The hydrant flushing at the Drew University was finished, and a report is being prepared on the findings, and copies are going to Drew and the Madison Fire Department. Eighteen meters were replaced due to age leaks or outside register installations. There were shut-offs and disconnections for house demolition, and that number was seven. The emergency generators are always run and tested, and they also receive quotes for replacing the emergency generator radiator at Wellby Station Road. EMR power systems will replace it. The fire hydrants need a painting, have been painted and color-coded according to the gallons-per-minute flow ongoing. And that, that is a big, a big job. There's a lot of hydrants in this town. From the Electric Department. They installed a new pole and anchor on Valley Road. They completed installation, new secondary cable and pole transfers on Lee Avenue, Hamilton, and Valley Road. They transferred pole and transformers on Ridge Dale Avenue. They installed new lampposts and wiring on Nordling Lane. And they installed CT cabinet meters and wire CTs at 39 Green Village Road. And of course, they have the usual service upgrades and the removals, and plenty of mark-out requests. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance of Borough Clerk, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Third and fourth quarter property tax bills for 2015, and the first and second quarter 2016 tax bills will be delayed due to the fact that the Morris County Board of Taxation is still not certified the tax rate. Taxpayers will have a minimum of 25 days from the date of mailing to pay their bill without penalty or interest. The borough may add some additional time to pay if it appears that the Labor Day holiday may impact the payment schedule. The $1.6 million MRC note is due August 14th. We hope to eventually retire that debt with $50,000 in donation proceeds from the MAF, $1 million from the Madison Board of Education from the Green Village Road proceeds, and $500,000 from the Green Acres Municipal Space Open, Municipal Open Space Trust Fund. We would like to thank Assemblyman John McKeon, Assemblywoman Myla Jacy, and Senator Richard J. Cody for their assistance in getting the extra $500,000. The legislation they sponsored has passed both houses of the legislature and is awaiting Governor Christie's signature, so fingers crossed on that. The 2014 audit has been reviewed by the Audit Committee and full governing body. It is a clean audit with no major exceptions. And finally, KRE, the developer of the Green Village Road school project, has secured their planning board approval, and pursuant to the documents, is obligated to pay an additional $10 million by December 1st of this year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. The Madison Health Department wishes that you all have a wonderful summer, but they'd like it also to be a healthy one. And to that end, they want you to be aware of problems with getting too much sun and the possibility of damaging your skin, as well as in the extreme, getting skin cancer. They recommend covering up, certainly during the brightest hours of the day, the midday. Use plenty of sunscreen. By all means, wear a hat, and it's always a good idea to have sunglasses. I think the conservative rule of thumb is if you go outside and you need a flashlight, you don't need sunscreen. Otherwise, you do. The issue with mosquitoes, I think we're all aware of. Please put on repellent. Deep-based is the best, albeit it has its own problems, but it still is the best. And if you have standing stagnant pools of water around your property, it would be very much appreciated if you would empty them. The last note is that we have wildlife in our community. Every now and again, a bear has been spotted. People talk about other animals. Please be careful with what you do if you entertain outside with the food you have remaining. So make sure it's carted away and carefully stored. Don't leave it outside. Thank you.
Thank you. And Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the roads from the Engineering Department, the Mill and Overlay work on Woodland and Noe has substantially been completed. This week, we'll be meeting with Sofeli and Sun to review the Ridge Dale Avenue construction project schedule. Tonight, we'll also be asking council to approve money to begin working on plans to reconstruct Prospect and Greenwood Avenues in 2016. This past year, we were a bit late in getting our major roadwork reconstruction out to bid. As a result, the project work has slipped to late summer and into fall. Additionally, we did not have as many contractors bidding as we would have hoped as a result of this. The goal is to get the projects approved very late this year, so that we can go to bid this coming winter, if we can get this work approved. And finally, for the sewers, the sewer lining work will begin within the next couple of weeks. It includes work that we authorized in both 2014 and 2015 budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize, I knew I had one more thing to announce, and that is our annual softball game, Quest Carers Charity Softball Game, is set for July 28th at Dodge Field at 5:30. Quest, as we have been doing over the last few years, is taking on the mayor's All-Star team. That might be exaggerated a little bit, but we were pretty darn good last year. And so please bring out the family. We have great live music from group therapy. There'll be barbecue there, and a chance to win prizes. And we, our team, the Madison team, will be made up of players from the Police Department, Fire Department, including Chief DeRosa, wearing a serious mask to prevent from pop flies, and DPW, and various volunteers from our committees. And there's a law here, including Councilman Bob Landrigan, so we're looking forward to see you roaming the field. And we're still need a few more players, so contact me, or you can reach out to Jim Burnett. Information is on Rosnet. And moving on, communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
Right, now we're on to invitation for discussion. This is the first of two for the public. This is limited to items on our agenda discussion, and also resolutions that are on the consent agenda. Our agenda discussions tonight include water connection fees, the sewer connection fees is being postponed, the 2014 initial audit, and appropriation of $90,000 for preliminary expenses related to reconstruction of Prospect and Greenwood, and then again, any of the resolutions. If you wish to comment any of those, please step forward, state your name, your address, and the resolution or agenda item you're talking about, and please try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Martin.
I wanted to speak on--
I'm sorry? And your name again, even though we know--
Oh, Warren Barbado, sorry. Sixth Earl in the court. I wanted to speak on Resolution 206, adopting the budget guidelines for 2016. So I hesitate to make these remarks, because I support what has been done by Tom Bittenger's committee. But nevertheless, for the following reasons, I suggest that the governing body postpone adoption of this resolution, and instead commit to consider these following recommendations, and also commit to coordinate discussions between Tom's committee and the Utilities Planning Committee, and then bring it back to the governing body for adoption. What is being proposed for adoption tonight, I think respectfully underperforms what it could, what could be adopted in the best interests of Madison. As I've said, I favor an ordinance over resolution. An ordinance provides the most certainty and the most transparency to the taxpayers. Further, with the proposed resolution, no plan is actually being adopted. The resolution does not obligate the council to any goals, and without goals, it's hard to say that there's actually a plan that's being tested. The council can simply disregard the guidelines if it became convenient to do so. Also troubling is that there's little transparency. The only reporting that is called for in the resolution is between, with regard to the actual activity and the guidelines, is by the CFO to the council. None is required to the residents. Also, the residents will not be able to easily close this transparency gap. Unlike searching for the borough code, there's no easy way for residents to find this resolution in the future. Thus, there's no easy way that residents can see what the governing body is doing relative to the resolution. Given all this, before adopting anything, it's respectfully recommended that the following revisions be considered. Commit to implement and follow the guidelines as goals for three years, beginning with 2016. Commit to publicly report annually on the, on the adopted budget versus the guidelines with the presentation and approval process of the annual budget. Commit to publicly report annually in January on the results of following the guidelines in the previous year. Commit to publicly report in January 2019 on the overall results of following the guidelines for the three-year period. In addition, these guidelines could be improved with expense budget preparation guidelines, as these are the starting point in municipal finances or expenses. Finally, it is recommended that the governing body postpone adoption until coordinated approach with the utility surplus can be prepared and presented. The municipal finance guidelines are primarily on the individual approaches to the individual amounts of primary sources of revenue in the budget, i.e. property taxes, municipal surplus, and utility surplus, but not on the mix. It would be helpful to have a way to assess the mix of the different revenue sources with the goal of achieving the mix that is in the best interests of the taxpayers. Given that implementation is scheduled to take place commencing with the 2016 budget, and given also that I'll be presenting in the Utilities Planning Committee in two weeks, it would seem that there is time to consider these recommendations before adoption tonight. Thank you.
Right, right on, right on the button, too. So we will be, when this comes up, we'll be pulling this resolution separately and have a separate discussion, so we can cover those things. And I'll also ask Matt Giacobi, our attorney, just to share his legal opinion, ordinance versus resolution, and impact on future councils, so make sure we'll cover that. And the Chair of the Committee, Mr. Bittenger.
Bittinger, Rolling Hill Court. I'd like to address the council and the mayor on the exact same resolution, number 206. On behalf of the committee, which spent about the last year and a half working on the presentation of these guidelines and the development, we would acknowledge that there's probably still more work that can and will be done. But I think this is an excellent first step to memorialize and get instituted in the process a reporting and consistent framework for the future. I think, just recognizing the comment that Mr. Barbado made, I think the last guideline that we proposed, while it's being dedicated to the CFO to prepare in his budget report, it is a five-year history against those guidelines. It's asking for a three-year forward period of a budget guideline to demonstrate, you know, what the future will bring into being, such that the guidelines could be used as a guidepost, as we have suggested. It is not to override, I think, the authority and the decision-making of the council. It is to provide transparency to the citizens of Madison, and have a public vehicle such that it can be used as a basis on an ongoing basis. So we would encourage, I think, the adoption of this particular resolution on an ongoing basis. And I know I have one of, at least one of my other members here, Mike Soriano, and I'm sure he can express his opinions as well. And I know you've had a lot of discussions with other committee member, Ben, who spent a ton of time on this particular process as well.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on resolutions or agenda items? Please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to agenda discussions. Water connection fees. Right? Or Bob Vogel's here? Right? Water connection fees.
Yeah, as far as the connection fee ordinances are concerned, this is something that we renew annually and has to be reviewed by statute by our auditor. And so the auditor comes back with a report once a year as to the additional appropriations that have been made the year previous, and as a history, which really doesn't change, of our prior appropriations for sewer and for water use. of our prior appropriations for sewer and for water use. And in fact, has done that and provided the administrator with the information that's required in order to verify the new sewer connection fee for 2014, based on the 2014 track record. So, I know there is a sewer fee separately, which is under review.
Right.
And should be appropriate, should be converted into an ordinance over the next meeting or so, once we get the details worked out. But as far as the water is concerned, the auditor's provided all the information that's required by statute, and we can adopt those, those changes by, by ordinance or resolution.
The basic concept everyone understands is the fact that through the rates, that water rates that our residents are paying, they've been investing in the infrastructure and to make sure that a new connection bears some of that cost, otherwise, they'll be reaping the benefits of our rate payers for many years prior. Any other questions or comments on the council? This ordinance is up for, it's 46, 2015, and it's for introduction tonight. Thank you, Bob. 2014 municipal audit.
I have the recommendations in front of me, and I can read them, but what happened was Nissavatia came in, they reviewed our audit practices, they reviewed our books, and they just found what essentially have four very minor recommendations. And if you'd like, I could just read them off real quick.
Great, if you could do that.
Inadequate segregation of duties to be maintained with respect to the recording and treasury functions. While that sounds ominous, the reality of it is, they said that's common in just about every municipality. We don't have large staffs here, so they'll always put that in there just to say it, but it's nothing that they found, there's no real problem there. All the grant receivables and appropriated revenues are reviewed for possible cancellation. The CFO has begun this review, and this is something that's done annually, so again, that's nothing major. Extra care be taken to ensure that expenditures are charged to the proper budget line item. You know, I believe what they found was maybe a few missed postings, nothing that really affects the books of the town there. And all health department receipts be recorded in the cash register as of the date of collection. That's it. So you have a borough with a budget of $60 million. Those are very minor. And their closing comment was, "We truly appreciate the team you have working here, and this borough is within the top 1% of boroughs in the state as far as how they operate."
Questions or comments on the audit? Ben?
The segregation of duties comment has come up every year that I can recall, and I think at, at some point, we need to examine it and determine if there is some substantive way of segregating some of these duties and get rid of hearing this comment every year. There is some validity, obviously, to having a system where you do segregate such duties. I have talked to the CFO about it. I think he needs to do a bit more work to see if there are economically feasible ways of accomplishing the objective without having to hire additional staff. And it's something I'd be happy to talk to him about, having gone through somewhat similar arrangements in a corporate environment.
Ray, I guess if you can work on that and report back to the council? Any other questions or comments? And that we have Resolution 205, accepting the audit on the consent agenda. And item three, appropriation of $90,000 for preliminary expenses related to reconstruction of Prospect Street and Greenwood Avenue. Mr. Vogel again.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so in our effort to advance the planning and design documents for our road improvement projects and also to select certain projects for potential state funding, which also requires some advanced planning, the idea here was to potentially apply for state aid funding for Prospect this year. And Prospect Street, as you know, is in, is in degraded state of affairs. It's supposed to come up for capital funding for next year, and we want to apply for state funding as quickly as possible and get the design documents completed so that we can get through the budget session with some good numbers. And also, Greenwood Avenue will follow as a major road. It's almost a mile in length at this stage of the game, and is also very appropriate for state aid funding in the not-too-distant future after, after Prospect Street is done. So, the idea was to get the surveying done initially and design services done as a second item, and as the construction costs and the five-year budget numbers have pulled together, it's about $1.5 million for those two projects combined. Obviously, they're not going to be done in the same year. They'll be done in separate years, perhaps three years if we phase it that way to maximize our state funding. The, the job is to, is to get it out to a surveyor and design consultant as soon as we possibly can. So we don't have any construction capital allocated to that task this year, so I'm asking for a separate allocation by ordinance for, for funding the survey and design services for those projects. Any questions?
Questions or comments on that? Okay, so this is ordinance 47, which is listed for introduction. Thank you, Bob. Ordinance for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Yes. The ordinance is scheduled for hearing, were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Monday, June 22nd, 2015. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting scene.
I'll call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 43, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending ordinance 52, 2014, appropriating $200,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Waverly Green Parking Lot Improvement Project to increase the appropriation from $200,000 to $250,000.
I open the hearing on ordinance 43-2015, and ask anyone wishing to comment on that, please step forward, state your name, your address, and please keep your comments three minutes or less. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 43-2015.
Second.
I'm speaking slowly, trying to give Ben a chance. Any council discussion?
Sure was hot today.
What?
Sure was hot today.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Killed a little time.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Could've mentioned.
Say yes. Okay, we have...
Say yes.
And Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
All right. I declare ordinance 43-2015 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 44, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $32,000 from the Fire Department Trust Fund to purchase notebooks and tablets.
I open the hearing for ordinance 44. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 44-2015.
A second.
Any council discussion? Roll call or vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 44-2015 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 45, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $7,942.79 from the Fire Department Trust Fund to repair Tower One.
I open the hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on ordinance 45, 2015, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 45-2015.
A second.
Council discussion? Roll call or vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 45-2015 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now, we're on to the second invitation for discussion. This is on any topic. Again, the same rules apply, as far as trying to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Please step forward, state your name, your address, and write the same on the clipboard. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we go to introduction of ordinances. Clerk, please read the statement.
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for Monday, July the 27th, 2015. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 46, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 190 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Water to update the water connection fee schedule.
Mayor, I move ordinance 46-2015.
Mr. Mayor, second the motion.
Any further discussion? Roll call or vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 47, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $90,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for a professional, professional services contract for engineering and design services for improvements to Prospect Street and Greenwood Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 47-2015. Rob, you can second it.
Oh, I'll start. No, no, 47?
There's a, there's a substitute, 47.
Ah, the substitute, that's right, I apologize. I second the motion.
Any further council discussion? Roll call or vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
All right. Clerk, let me just, the title, the number is... Okay, we're, consent agenda resolutions, I'll have the clerk please read that, and then we'll comment on the ones that are being pulled.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Okay, and we are pulling 214. Lease with the Early Trade Museum, and one is being pulled for a separate discussion, and I've lost track of that number.
206.
206, thank you. Here we go. So 206 will be moved and discussed separately.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions R204-2015, R205-2015, R207-2015 through R213-2015, and then R2015, 215-2015 through R223-2015. And we pulled 206 for further discussion.
Right, yes, yep. Have a second, please?
A second.
Any other discussion? Roll call or vote on the consent agenda?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Hey, may I have a motion on Resolution 2006, 2015?
I move R206-2015.
I'll second it.
And council discussion. Well, actually, first, let me get, Matt, just the question related to ordinance versus resolution and the impact of binding future councils.
What, the, one thing that I had suggested, and I think this is the step in the right direction, is doing it by resolution, is ultimately, you have bylaws that the council adopts each year at reorganization. You could put a requirement into bylaws whereby, and that's what you've done here in some respect, where it says the, under, the attached budget guidelines are approved for the preparation of the 2016 budget and will be reviewed and re-adopted or revised at the 2017 reorganization meeting on January 1st and future reorganization meetings thereafter. That's to go along with the bylaws. And the reason I think it's important to do it by resolution as opposed to an ordinance, is if you do it by ordinance, you are binding future boards. And the one thing I can tell you, and I'm not a finance guy, is that budgets are, are a living, moving document. There are things that nobody can anticipate, Hurricane Sandy, you know, tragedies, Greece crisis, things can happen that change, and you need to have some fluidity with the ability to do that. I think by having a guideline like this in place by resolution with a commitment that you're going to re-adopt it every year in January, it's giving a commitment to the residents that you're going to utilize a methodology, a budgetary guideline methodology going forward on a regular basis, but you're not going to have a situation where it's codified and adopted in ordinance. The problem with an ordinance is it requires two readings, a first reading and a second reading. Sometimes, I think that you need to move more quickly if certain things happen. I think you can accomplish the same thing by having that commitment on an annual basis in your bylaws, where you're committed to having a budget guideline process that's adopted each year. The other thing, too, is when you adopt it at the beginning of the year, you'll know, and people will know what's going on historically at that time. So that'd be my recommendation. The other issue, too, is binding future governing bodies with guidelines, one of the most important things that governing bodies do is set the budget, whether it's crafting the budget, putting it together, setting tax rates, utilization of utility receipts, et cetera. And I think that's something that you guys should always use great discretion, that's why you're elected to do. And I think the resolution process will give you that discretion where you guys can really exercise the right that the people elected you for.
Carmelo?
I just want to ask Matt a question. So, basically, these guidelines could be used for the 2016 budget. I see that. It's almost like a little test at this point. In 2017, in January, if we need to amend it at that point, we could do that. Am I right?
You can amend it, and you make a commitment that...
Add to it, subtract?
Yeah, every January 1st, if you recall, every January 1st at your reorganization, one of the things that you guys do as a governing body is you adopt bylaws. So what you're doing is you're making a commitment, and every January 1st, as part of your bylaw adoption, you're going to have budgetary guidelines that each January 1st, you can tweak. If you say, you know what, that's not working, the five-year lookback wasn't enough, we need a seven-year lookback, or whatever it is, that gives you the flexibility every January to revisit this issue. Because the one thing I can tell you about ordinances, very often with ordinances, is they get adopted, and then they just go away, and people... And I, I was in a litigation recently, dealing with a cable television case, and the ordinance had been updated since 1977, I think Jimmy Carter was president. That happens with ordinances. The one thing by making this commitment every January is that you, as a governing body, are going to be recalled upon every January to look at this, say, hey, is this right? Should we tweak it? If that will help keep this process and this debate alive.
Bob?
Well, the last part of what Matt said just answered my question, that it will obligate us to reference them and use them.
Yeah. Pat? So two, one question for Matt first. Can ordinances sunset? In other words, can you make them effective for a certain period of time, and then they go away?
Yeah, you, you could do that with, with a refresher. I don't generally like to do that because there's a whole publication process, and then you'd have to, I feel the, the problem with, with an ordinance that sunsets is, I think you have an obligation to notify people that it's sunsetted. A lot of times, what happens, it sunsets, it stays in the books, and people don't realize that it's sunsetted.
Because the one concern I have about, I'll, I'll take this part first, this is more the procedural thing, a resolution versus an ordinance is, many times, you know, we come here at night, and we pass a resolution that we haven't even bothered to post online. In fact, if you're not here and you don't hear us read it, you don't even know that it's happened until you see it in the paper, or maybe you read about it when we published the minutes. With an ordinance, we would have to go through our first hearing, publish a notice that we're going to have a second hearing, and give people the opportunity to come back and talk about it. And, and the reason I say that is because, and I've struggled with this, because I go back and forth, I've been working or thinking about this for a couple of years, a lot of my thoughts on the guidelines actually predate even the Strategic Planning Committee. I've always felt strongly that a lot of the things that are in the guidelines are things that I think we, we should have been doing for the last couple of years. But having said that, I was really hoping, coming out of the strategic planning, that we would have a specific set of goals, not just guidelines, because typically with strategic planning, that's what you get, a sort of a, what are we going to, where do we want to be three or five years from now? Not just, well, we have a set of guidelines or a rubric that we're going to look at every year and decide, you know, are we making progress or not? So I was really hoping we, the council would be committing itself to a place it's going to try to get to over the next three or at a maximum of five years, and the guidelines, the ranges that were in the guidelines were those goals. So I was really hoping that we were going to ultimately have an ordinance, something a little bit more substantial, but also not just the fact that we're going to do all these best practices, but that we're actually going to commit ourselves to getting somewhere vis-à-vis what our, our budget is today. And so, that's why I'm struggling right now with this resolution, because I don't think it really accomplishes any of that. You know, it's good, but it's, in some ways, to me, less than half of what we, I really expected to get out of the process. And my fear is that, and I agree that Tom says, you know, this is a continuing process, but my bigger fear is that this is as far as we're going to go as a council, because I get the sense, based on the last conversation we had, that a lot of people are concerned about... Because I get the sense, based on the last conversation we had, that a lot of people are concerned about, or maybe don't feel that we can make these goals. And I think if that's the case, I think then we really should relitigate or re-debate what the specific goals are. And if not, then we really should try to find a better way to commit ourselves to actually enacting them over, let's say, at a minimum, the next five years.
Ben?
Obviously, as a member of the committee that came up with these guidelines and as the major proponent of them on this council, I feel compelled to address a couple of the issues that have been brought up. First of all, I'd just like to say that I wager that in the history of the Council of Madison, that this is probably the most vetted resolution that has ever come before a council. We have been discussing this since December ninth of two thousand fourteen. The meetings that we had were open to the public, public was invited, and indeed, members of the Utilities Committee did attend from time to time. So there was no effort to ever just kind of unfold this in front of this group with no, with absolutely no expectation of what you'd be getting. There was, we set the table, we filled the glasses, we did everything we could in anticipation of bringing this forward. Prior to these guidelines, councils, for the most part, operated without serious frameworks in which to cast a budget. So they knew that they had a certain amount of money coming in and they knew there was money to be spent. But surplus was a mystery. No, when I became the finance liaison, one of the first questions I asked is how much municipal surplus is appropriate? And no one could answer that question. We're now telling you in the guidelines, after much research and a lot of effort, that twenty to twenty-five percent is the appropriate benchmark. The rest of the guidelines function in much the same way. The notion that our guidelines or our strategic planning committee would come out with something other than the guidelines is something we considered as well, and indeed, we've come out with processes. And I'm concerned that the attendees of this meeting would believe that somehow we would contribute to a more opaque budget process. Indeed, what the guidelines will do is require the CFO to present in a public meeting the results of simulations going forward five years and back at least three. That means that trends that exist in the budget over time would be uncovered. And we did that largely because we were very concerned to see that five years in a row, the council approved no money for the Capital Improvement Fund. And as a result, we were driving around in streets that required army vehicles rather than cars until recently allocating sufficient funds to mill them and repair them. So, and then the final thing that concerns me is this whole notion that we need to have goals in this. I think the setting of goals is exactly why we're sitting here. We are the Council of Madison, and as representatives of the people of Madison, it is for us to set the goals. It's not for a committee as well-intended and as expert as they may be, and indeed, this one was a pleasure to serve on, to set up the goals for the future of this town. That's what council does, and that's what the mayor does. And it is not our position to do that. It is not appropriate for us to do that, and we gave no thought to doing that. So I think that this has gone beyond reasonable discussion. I believe these guidelines will enhance our budget process going forward. They will facilitate understanding of our budgets by our citizens, and they will make for a better educated populace if they're indeed interested in learning more about the budget process. And that's what's intended. As our chairman, Tom Vittenger, said, work is not done. We never thought that everything would be solved in an instant. There's more to be done, but we're not coming back and saying, this is what you should do. We're coming back and saying, here are guidelines that are a framework in which you should be working. And that's an important distinction. So I just want to say, if it's the sense of this council that this group should be setting the goals for our budget process, not just the guidelines, then you're giving up a lot of power as a council and a lot of fiduciary responsibility. And I don't think that's what we're supposed to be doing. So, thank you.
Rob, and then back to Pat.
So if we do it in resolution and there are guidelines, and we can change it every year, right?
That's correct.
So my main concern with that, and I think Ben, very well spoken, excellent points, it's the whole, like, you guys know what the post hoc fallacy is? Post hoc, ergo, propter hoc, after this, therefore, because of it, right? So some guy, it's a logical fallacy. So you wake up in the morning, you see the rooster crow, and the sun comes up, so you say, oh, obviously, the sun came up because the rooster crowed. It's not, you know, it's, if every year, we can amend the guidelines, okay? You know, what's to stop people from claiming that, oh, we're just amending the guidelines to fit the budget that we passed? Well, so, 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 you know, we speak about serious frameworks, and Ben's right, that, you know, we needed more serious frameworks, but how serious can the frameworks be if we can just change them every January? Right? So I see both sides of the argument. On the one hand, you don't want to give away fiduciary responsibility, okay? And that's what we're elected for. But on the other hand, if we can just change these willy-nilly, not that we would, okay, but, you know, you can't say what's going to happen five, ten years down the road, then what was the point after all?
What I'll tell you is, if you look at the guidelines, they have guidelines on how much debt you should have. What is the percentage of the utility surplus should you use? What surplus should you have in the next year's budget is, matches the surplus you had this year? To me, those are guidelines. They're not hard and fast numbers, and things can change. You might have a situation one year where you can't use twenty-two percent surplus from the utility. There's a catastrophic issue that you're going to have to need, use more. You'll have to then justify it, explain why you're doing it, have the CFO explain why we have to deviate from it. And it's something that you, as a governing body or whoever occupies these seats, will make that decision. In terms of an ordinance, what we're talking about is having it adopted along with your annual bylaws every year. It's a commitment that you will adopt it every year. An ordinance can change after a first reading and a second reading. I think that my, it was my recommendation, you know, not Ben's or anyone else's, to do it by resolution so that you guys could, because it's still adopted, you can still post it, you can post it around your website. These are the guidelines that we're going to be utilizing, so the whole world knows about them. They're not hidden. And I think that you'll accomplish the same thing, but give yourself flexibility so that if something has to change, and remember, these are new guidelines. This process just started about a year, a year and a half ago, and you've now come to, you know, different budget presentations, et cetera. It's still a work in progress. And I think that until you've gone through a couple of cycles, it might be easier for you to do it by resolution with a commitment that'll be adopted every year. That is just my recommendation. If you did it by ordinance, I think that it takes away some of the governing body's flexibility. And the six of you occupy these seats now, ten years from now, it'll be, you know, six different people who might have different feelings or think the guidelines are going to be tweaked differently. Things might change. We just don't know, you know, where things are in terms of state aid, you know, two percent tax levy caps, electric rates, there's all different variables. I think that you need to be able to revisit this on an annual basis. And I think, frankly, I think that by doing it by this way, by resolution, with a commitment at your annual meeting, you're forcing the governing body every year to look at this. And I assure you that there are ordinances on your book and in many business filings that no one's looked at for years and years and years. And you do some research and say, oh, my goodness, there's an ordinance on that issue? I never thought of it. Because the ordinance books are massive. Not everything you realize, you know, over the course of thirty, forty years, there's an ordinance on virtually almost everything. So I just, that's my legal recommendation.
I think we had Pat, Bob, and then Ben. Did you have your?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, Pat, Bob, and then Ben.
Yeah, I mean, the way I looked at it is, we gathered a lot of very good people, Ben included, to review what our current budget is, what it's been like for the last twenty years, and give us a recommendation about where they thought the budget should be going. Whether you call them guidelines or goals, ultimately, to me, they're the same thing. Because if every year you're going to pull the guidelines out and say, does this year's budget meet the guidelines? Then I'm not sure why you wouldn't want to make that a goal for at least the next several years. It may, it's not achievable, a lot of this stuff is not achievable in one year. But again, the administration's about to go into budget preparation for next year. So to wait until January for us to kind of give them guidance for the two thousand sixteen budget, I think, isn't the best idea. I think as a council, we'd be better off telling them now where we'd like them to start to move us if we believe that these goals or guidelines are the proper place to go.
You're adopting this right now for the two thousand sixteen budget.
No, no, I understand that. But again, it's not really saying that that's what we want as our goal for next year. It's just saying that in two thousand sixteen, we're going to hold the rubric up against the budget and say, did we meet it or not? And if not, why not? That's all we're going to do according to this resolution, the way I read it.
Great, and, yeah, and that's.
So, I mean, to me, that's, again, when you do strategic planning, the idea is you're coming up with, and I think you actually wrote this in a paper, you know, where do you really want to be some number of years down the road? And you want to pick goals that are achievable but somewhat of a stretch. And I think, again, one of the reasons the roads were as bad as they were for the last five years is five or six or seven years ago, we went through the whole issue with the electric rate growing on the wholesale side and not on the retail side. And that's where all our, a lot of our capital money evaporated. I don't want to see us back in that position again. That's the one thing I think I've learned from the last decade or so. And I thought that the guidelines that we had were also good goals. And that's why I would prefer to see them as goals for us to achieve over a reasonable period of time as opposed to just every year saying, you know, are we making any progress vis a vis a set of guidelines? That's my position on this.
Bob, and then Ben.
Hey, well, both of them have very hard acts to follow in what they said, but both Pat and Ben spoke very well. I was very, and I'll be candid with you, I was very reluctant in the beginning when the numbers were published. Because Matt kind of alluded to something that went through my head, that we should go through a few cycles. You know, past history was checkered, you know, spend a lot one year, didn't spend a lot next year. And we really don't know yet how well these numbers are going to work. We have a pretty darn good idea, but we don't know for sure, so we do need that flexibility. Whether you call these goals or guidelines, to me, that's semantics. I think the key to this is the following. Every year, we will adopt these, and I'll call them guidelines, because that's what they are. As Ben mentioned, the CFO will be required to compare our performance looking back X number of years and looking forward and planning future years. To me, that's more than enough to ask of any governing body or any company to do. Because you've come out with a budget, you've come out with numbers, you're comparing it to past history, and now you're planning ahead. So Pat, to your question about goals, I think that answers the goal question in regards to how well we've done compared to the past. Well, now you have it. So I think by doing it by resolution, adopting it every year, forcing the CFO to do this performance measurement, I think you've covered all your bases. And looking through this, I think every base has been covered. And getting back to what both Martin and Tom said, yeah, there is more work to be done. So I think at this stage of the game, to look at this as a resolution would be more than adequate.
The other thing you guys may want to think about is, you might be, if not the only, one of the only municipalities that is probably engaged in this type of guideline and debate. I mean, it's something that you might want to think about sharing with other municipalities, because it's a good, you're unique because you have utilities. There's not many others who have utilities. But I think that what you experienced the last twenty years and what you guys have done the last two or three years shows, I think, there's probably a lot more municipalities doing it the way you had previously done it, where it's just kind of on a year-to-year basis, not a projection backwards and forwards. You know, so it's something that, you know, you might want to ultimately share it with the league municipalities and, you know, get their input. But I think right now, I would suggest you do it by resolution. It's something we can always revisit. And a resolution does, you're bound by it. I mean, this year, it's a binding resolution that your CFO, your BA, and your department heads are going to have to comply with utilizing these guidelines when they're putting together the two thousand sixteen budget.
And if they can't?
They got to come back to you. You're the governing body. And ultimately, if there's a problem, they should be, they should come back to you, and that's what requires the CFO to come back to you. So that you, as the elected officials, can say, okay, wait a second. Us collectively, the majority of us feel that although the guideline says twenty-two percent for utility this year, we don't want to see a tax increase, so we'll go with twenty-five percent. That's something that you, as a governing body, don't want to give up, because that's why you're elected, so that you have the ability to look at the changing situations that occur in our economy and our state and in our nation.
We got Ben and Carmella and then Pat, and maybe we'll be wrapping it up at some point.
I'll defer to Carmella. I'll go after.
Okay. Carmella, then Ben, then Pat.
So sweet. I, I'm just, I'm not going to get into all of this wonderful discussion that we've had, because these guys are very bright and, you know. I'm going to look at it in a very simplistic way. Sitting here, six people plus a mayor, has a fiduciary responsibility to the residents of this town. I take that very, very seriously and always have. When there is something wrong in the town, we are the ones that get the questions put forward to us. And we have to come up with the answers because we're representing those people. So, you know, I thought long and hard about this and had lots of discussions with Ben, you know, about resolution and ordinance and whatever. And I think by, so, I mean, Matt just articulated this so well, is by making this a resolution, we're making a first step that we have not had in all the years that I know of. You know, way back in nineteen nineties, there were guidelines. I don't know what happened to them, but, you know, they were never brought forward after a while. But now we have someplace that we could at least start. So we have to at least try and see how this works with the two thousand sixteen budget. And, you know, one of the first things that I said to Tom and his group when they did the presentation, that their presentation should almost be a primer for, for all of the councils that come forward. And this is the result of it, is after all of this work, these people have said, hey, listen, these are your guidelines. And I, you know, I for one want to accept the fiduciary responsibility of saying, you know, this is what I think should be done as far as the residents, that's why we all got elected. And I think it's our responsibility. So I just want to say, I hope, you know, after much conversation and much thought about this, you know, the resolution, I think, is, you know, the first step in the right direction. So I will be fully supporting this tonight.
The one thing that we could do, which I think would kind of address everyone's issues, is you could amend your, you have an ordinance that says that you have to adopt annual bylaws, the governing body does. We could amend that ordinance that says they have to adopt annual bylaws which shall include budgetary guidelines on an annual basis by resolution that forces the adoption of these guidelines on an annual basis, but doesn't codify the actual guidelines. I think you want that flexibility in the guidelines, so you can force whatever governing body is to have the guidelines so they don't disappear into, you know, the nineteen ninety abyss where no one knows what happened to them. That's a way of doing it, too, where I think you maintain the flexibility, but you force the issue on an annual basis.
Ben and Pat?
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, you could adopt this tonight. We could still.
Yes, we can come back to it later. A couple of things. One is, I am wondering to what extent goals, guidelines, we're dealing with semantic pins, as it were, and worried about details that are of no consequence. If indeed the expectation is that a committee was to come up with the kind of guidance that we would look to our council for, then I have a real problem with that. And I, we purposely stayed away from stepping that, into that turf. That is not for a committee to do. And we have other committees that will be reporting in the future, and I don't see any of them doing that either. I mean, there's certain presumptionous, presumptuous, sorry, to come to a council and say, this is what you should do. These are your goals. This is where you should be in five years. And I don't think, unless somebody believes they're the smartest person in town and has all the right answers, that any one of us should be empowered that way, nor should a committee.
a committee. To the extent that this council has to make very difficult decisions, what we wanted to do was to make sure that those decisions were made with guidance and with some kind of organizational structures, so that people would better understand what those, the implications were of those decisions. And I believe we've accomplished that. The way the, or the resolution is written, this is not a matter where once a year, someone can stand up and say, I don't want to give that much to capital, let's cut it in half. And everyone else will just say, that's a great idea, let's go for it. That is not a scenario that makes any sense, looking at how these guidelines are structured. You have to justify why you believe there should be a magnitude change in any of the guidelines. And the anticipation is, or the expectation is, that the first instance of someone raising an objection of that sort would be the CFO. That the CFO, in recognizing where the finances of the borough are headed, would see that we've built into guidelines something that simply is unattainable and should be discussed by the council. As I said earlier, what I want to avoid, and what I hope we never see again, is a replay of a town allowing its infrastructure to decline dramatically and not recognizing, or at least not, as far as I could tell, explicitly recognizing, that over five years, nothing was being allocated to the capital fund. A tragic mistake. I don't see how that could possibly happen, given the way we've written these guidelines. You would have a council that would look at five years and say, does this make any sense? For five years, we have zero next to capital investment? I mean, it would be that evident. But if you do it piecemeal, and we've been doing a lot of our budgeting piecemeal, you run the risk that that could happen. So if nothing else, what these guidelines will do is force you to have a multi-year look when you're thinking about the budget. And I also want to say that a lot of our thought, and I mentioned this briefly, but I want to emphasize it, a lot of our thought went into the process itself, the information flow itself. I think in the past, guidelines went nowhere, because very few people understood them. We have precisely the opposite objective. We'd like everyone to understand them. And we would like everyone to understand how the budget is doing relative to those guidelines. I can't force anyone to be interested, but if you're interested, I can damn well make it a lot easier for you to learn what's going on. And that's what I believe we've accomplished with these guidelines, in addition to, as we've been saying, setting up a framework, putting some things on the table that we haven't had before. And I don't believe anyone sitting here thinks that by accepting these guidelines, we're going to somehow make our budget process worse. I don't think that's even remotely close to what anyone's thinking. If we're going to hold out for perfection, you know, I'm moving on here. I don't know how many more years I'll be on a council. So at some point, you got to take what you got and go with it. And if you can improve on it in the future, wonderful. But at least we have a start. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, you...
You know, I think, again, we ultimately do retain the responsibility, and if we decide to use these guidelines as goals, that's still our responsibility and our choice. It happens to be my choice, because I think these are good goals for any council to use, so we don't end up finding ourselves in the same position we were five years ago. I definitely don't think the guidelines are going to make the process worse, I think they're going to make them a lot better, but I think we can make it even better, is if we turned them into goals for the administration to start to build next year's budget and the year after, and the year after that. And, you know, in terms of resolution, I was thinking about the word resolution, and every year, on New Year's, I make a resolution to lose 30 or 40 pounds, and here I sit. So, to me, that's how I sort of look at resolutions. They're, they're nice things that we say, that we like to do, and we have all kinds of whereas's, but I think the more we can harden these guidelines as real guidance, is where we want to direct the budget going forward, I think the better off will be, and it'll keep us from repeating some of the problems we've had over the last decade or so. So I'm going to reluctantly vote no this evening. Not because I don't believe in the guidelines, not because I don't, I actually believe very firmly in the work that was done, I just think we can do better. And so that's going to be my vote this evening.
Rob, and maybe we'll be wrapping it up.
So, yeah, I think semantics, you know, goals, guidelines, I understand. But, I mean, when we look back at the history of this, right, we, we put off making, as an elected body, put off making major decisions, vis-à-vis the electric rate cut back in 2013, 2014, while we waited for the, for the strategic planning committee to report their findings. Their report, the 2015 budget missed several of the guidelines. And we amended, then we amended the guidelines to kind of make it look like the, not to kind of, but it's like, maybe we learned, okay, we put chocolate glingers, but... So I totally understand the concept of our fiduciary responsibility and the flexibility that we need, but we can't just keep changing these guidelines every year, you know, to kind of match what it is the, you know, the majority of the council wants to do that year. So, you know, while I would like to vote no, I'm probably going to vote yes, but in the future, if we come back and we want to keep just like noodling on these guidelines every year, that's where we're going to have to draw the line. Because we put off, right, major decisions while we waited for this, for these, for these committees to report, right? And then, you know, we did a good job last year, but we didn't get to where we had to be. And then miraculously, we changed, we changed the guidelines. And to me, you know, I think the less we change this, the better, okay? So, you know, of course, we may have to change going in the future, but we can't every year just continue to change the guidelines in a willy, again, I use the word again, willy-nilly fashion, because then people will lose, they'll lose their effectiveness, they'll lose their power. It'll look like something that we're just doing to kind of justify post hoc, ergo propter hoc, yeah? So, and we can't, we can't fall into that.
Okay. Do we really need to, because I think we're...
It's your call, but I think we have some confusion here on timeline. And, and, you know, I hate to see it go by. It was, it was never the intent of this committee to address the issue of electric rates. If anything, the utility committee was charged with that.
I was talking about strategic planning in general.
No, but I understand. But in 2013, we weren't doing much in strategic planning, other than discussing what the various groups might do. They did not get off the ground until 2014. So that's the part I want to clarify.
But I would, I would suggest, I recall pretty, I think succinctly, that we decided not to even discuss it, because we wanted to wait, as it was a big campaign of mine, we wanted to wait, and we weren't going to discuss electric rates until the strategic planning got up and running.
No, no, no. As I recall it, we wanted to see what our experience was going to be with rates that, when we were going into the market, to see how much surplus we would generate before we decided about electric rates. It had nothing to do with the guidelines.
I think that was, yeah, but, okay, let's...
I'll pull your mailer.
Okay.
Because I still have it, you know? So, we'll see.
By all means.
Not your mailer, the Maureen's mailer.
All right.
All right, so...
Yes, that's fine with me.
Okay, you know, just very, very quick, to Pat's point about New Year's resolutions, the, you know, the big difference, I think, is, one, you break that resolution on New Year's, you're answering to yourself and maybe your spouse. You know, councils that will not hold up a resolution here answer to the voters, and I think that's what the intent here is. And I want to commend this council and all the committee work, because what you have seen is why some towns have avoided this topic. How do you do strategic planning when 1/30 year board changes on, could change on an annual basis? How do you do that? How can you, how can you tell a future council, this is how you're going to vote in the budget? We can't. So what we're doing is our best possible to at least be responsible to the voters of, these are our guidelines, if we're not going to adhere to them, we will report to you. If, if five years from now, eight years from now, there's six different, seven different people sitting here, they will either say, we're throwing it all out, or they will still be answering. And either way, they're answering to our residents by either throwing it out or by saying, this is why we're not following it. So this is a great news, great step forward, and I think Matt said it very well. Hopefully, this is a workshop in November of 2016, we can't get on this year's agenda, on how to do some forward thinking and how municipalities can make sure we take care of roads and listen to our residents and be more transparent. So on that, I think we're ready for roll call vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
No.
Thank you. And thank you for all the excellent work on that, and spirited discussion. It was very, very good. I think key is, we're all supportive, it's just the way to get there. There is no unfinished business, and so approval of vouchers.
Public safety, $24,321.71. Health and public assistance, $6,276.8. Public works and engineering, $152,039.23. Community affairs, $9,108.55. Finance and borough clerk, $4,148,230.77. And utilities, $480,662.41. The total is $4,820,638.75.
May I move the vouchers?
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. There is no new business?
And with that, I move, we adjourn.
All right. Thank you. Great job, everyone, and we'll be back in two weeks.
I've been reading, so... It's so hard.
I promise, I believe in more strongly than anybody else does. It's not that I don't believe in them, I want to see them.
I forgot, like...
Isn't it, isn't it just so beautiful? I always think of that.